Yeah. 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 March 17th, 2017. We'll start off with a report from our closed session, please.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, council considered in closed session two claims, one filed by a Shueta Ha Lamb and another by Jesus Aquino, and the council recommended denial of both of those claims.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the call to order. If you would please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present.
Thank you. Okay. Item four, adoption of agenda.
Move to adopt.
Okay, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oral communications, number one. This is a chance for anyone in the public to address the council for items not on the agenda. You may fill out a slip. If you have anything, I don't have any slips, so is there anyone who would like to give oral communications? Okay. All right. We will move on to item six, presentations. So I'm pleased to introduce our new supervisor, David Canapa, who's here to say a few words.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been forty days since I've been on the board of supervisors, but I really wanted just to take the opportunity to thank many of you. We've had the opportunity to meet and speak on various issues, I think, in the next several weeks. In particular, I think we're meeting with your city manager to talk about projects that are important to you. I just want to make you aware that we continue to reach out to the various city councils and to many of you, thank you for being accessible. Because for me, as being a new supervisor and being there forty days, we're focused on several things. One, it's listening, learning, and then community compassion and collaboration. And so to understand your issues and for us to work as the previous supervisor had worked in a collaborative manner makes our communities much stronger. I will tell you, and the city manager can attest to this, the difference between the county and the city is pretty dramatic. So our main focus and what we're working on, obviously, many of you participated in housing, transportation issues. We're dealing specifically around the renovation to meet a 2020-2030 mandate around San Mateo County Medical Center. I sit on several boards that you should be aware of. I sit on the, all of the criminal justice boards, so dealing with probation, dealing with specifically the sheriff's office. I'm on the health plan of San Mateo. As you know, in the county of San Mateo, we have about 126,000 people, you know, that get, indigent folks or people who need help with healthcare, and the health plan deals with that specifically. But tonight is just an opportunity for me to say, you know, our office wants to work with you. It's great to go from being the only staff person, being on the city council, to having four staff members. My staff consists, and many of you may know, Bill Silverfarb used to write for the San Mateo Daily Journal. He handles a lot of the policy issues. Ann Kegren, who serves, was the mayor of Brisbane, mayor of, excuse me, mayor of Burlingame, sits on, and also sits on the city councils on my staff, as well as, I think many of you know, Atanasio Bayudon, he's our chief of staff. And then Mike Richardson does a lot of our constituent issues. But we look forward to working with you in a collaborative manner, and thank you for the opportunity. I don't know if you have any specific questions. I know council member Lentz and I sit on CCAG, and council member Lentz had reached out to me, you know, on a particular issue around a trail. And so I think it's those sort of exchange of ideas and working in a collaborative manner to make sure that North San Mateo County continues to receive fundings for those projects and that a project you had talked to me about last night, I don't know if you wanted to say anything about that in particular.
Yeah, no, I appreciate, you know, you reaching out to me. I called David, he called me right back, and we talked about the issues regarding the OABAG II funding for the Crocker Park Trail, and David's very supportive of our efforts to provide alternative commuter choices to the Crocker Industrial Park. So I want to thank you for that, and yeah, hopefully, you know, with your efforts and I know that Karen Kinsner is going to be at the meeting, hopefully some members of the public. We can get the CCAG board members to approve that application and move it on to MTC.
Perfect.
So thank you for that.
Great. And I don't know if you have any questions, but first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it, Madam Mayor, and look forward to the tour with your city manager.
Great. Well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you reaching out to all of us individually and also the county's support of our library project and continued support. We hope you have a chance to view the new site. And do you want to announce your event that's coming up?
Oh, very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So on March 18th, we're putting together an event. It's called District Five Together. We actually have, which is amazing, we have forty-five tables, and I was just talking to someone who's going to present after from the PCE. So it's from everything, from the Office of Emergency Services to Veterans Affairs. So we have all these, sort of, you could say, tables. And so it's really, really important because one of the things I'm focused on is how do we, the county offers so many great programs, but how do we get people connected with them or more connected with them in North San Mateo County? So I'll leave this with you. The event is called District Five Together. Clark would appreciate this. It's food, fun, and you. And so in regards to what's happening, there's a lot of things happening, a lot of potential chaos in terms of federal politics, no matter whether you're Democrat or Republican or how you see it. But this is just an event where people can access resources. We're going to have various performers, so it's going to really be exciting. I hope all you can come. It's going to be a great time.
Right. Thank you.
Go ahead and announce where it's at, David.
Sure, thank you. It's your alma mater. It's your alma mater. Councilmember Conway. It's going to be at Jefferson High School at March 18th from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And so if you want to RSVP, it's going to be at the Jefferson High School Theater at 6996 Mission Street. You can RSVP with our office at 650-363-4247. Great.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And I'll leave this with the staff.
Great. Okay. And next, item B, we have the presentation by Peninsula Clean Energy. I want to introduce Kirsten Andrew Schwind, the Communications and Outreach Manager of Peninsula Clean Energy.
Great. Councilmembers, staff, thank you so much for inviting me today. And also I want to thank the city of Brisbane for opting up to ECO 100, and I'm pleased to observe this wonderful council room, which is lit, and all the electricity here is 100% renewable energy, so thank you for that decision. I'm going to go through a little bit of background, and I believe this is being filmed and may be shown on your cable station, so I'm going to cover some background that you're already familiar with. So Peninsula Clean Energy is the official electricity provider for San Mateo County with cleaner energy and greener power at lower rates. So what that means is that means that residents of San Mateo County now have a choice of buying their electricity from PG&E or from Peninsula Clean Energy. And the benefits are reductions in greenhouse gas emissions, cleaner choices at comparable rates, investing in our community, and local control and reliable service. So how this works is that Peninsula Clean Energy buys electricity on your behalf, that's electrical generation part, and then PG&E still does the transmission, so they maintain all the wires, and then PG&E still does the metering and the billing, so it's a partnership there. What our offerings are, are ECO Plus, ECO 100, or you can opt out to stay with PG&E. And I'll go through what some of these options are for you. ECO Plus offers 50% renewable energy for 5% less on your bill than what you would pay for PG&E on electrical generation. So you see our new rates here, effective March 15th, in which the board, which includes Mayor Lou, went ahead and approved a rate reduction to ensure that our customers continue to enjoy that 5% savings. And now PG&E is currently offering 30% renewable energy, which is meeting their renewable portfolio standards, but here in San Mateo County, decided we can offer more than that. And then there's also the option for ECO 100, which is 100% renewable energy. And that cost, it's just one cent per kilowatt hour more than the ECO Plus. It comes out to about 5% more than PG&E after fees. So for the hours residential household, it's between $2 to $5. It's really not a big difference, but it is a big difference for the environment. There are some differences on your bill, so, and PG&E bills, as we know, can be a little bit complex, so I encourage anybody who's interested in really digging into the changes in your bill to go to our website, and under rates, there's a sample bill where you can walk through all the changes. You'll see a charge on the first page of the bill, but then on the second part of the bill, there's a credit, and the credit is actually larger than the charge. So you need to look at both of those to determine your savings. That can be a little bit confusing for people, so that's good for you to know. Let's see. Hmm.
I guess we didn't pay the electric bill.
There we go. Okay, great. So we actually are already serving 80,000 customers. We launched in October 2016, and that was a phase-one launch. We enrolled 20% of our residential customers. Those were chosen randomly by postal code, so, you know, certain sets of neighbors all throughout the county. And we also enrolled our small businesses. Now in April, we're enrolling most of the rest of the residential customers, as well as large businesses. And so that is an exciting development for Earth Day, some, you know, way that we can really make a big difference. So when I say enroll, what I mean is that everyone will be automatically enrolled in the ECO Plus program to enjoy more renewable energy at lower rates. And we do this because this program's actually set up that way through state law. However, it is very easy to opt out and remain with PG&E if you wish to do so. You can call our call center or go to our website. And all customers will receive at least four notices in the mail from us, letting them know what their new options are. And here's an example of the, what those notices look like, what some of the artwork on the envelopes look like. We know people tend to just sort of recycle their mail, so we try to make the notices look a little bit different, each one. There'll be a postcard, there'll be a fancy envelope. Each one will look a little bit different to try to catch people's attention. Many things stay the same, and this is an important message, that if you have customers or residents who are on the care program, which is a low-income discount or medical baseline for folks who may have a medical appliance in their house, these are PG&E discounts that automatically continue with your, if you're a PCE customer. They're actually on the electrical transmission side of the bill. So becoming a PCE customer does not affect your care discount at all. And actually, I just learned that medical baseline customers receive an even larger discount because they don't have to pay a certain fee, and so they're actually receiving a 35% discount if they go with PCE, which is amazing. PG&E, as I mentioned, continues to maintain the power lines, so if there's an outage, we call PG&E. And one of the great things about this program is it can reflect the local values of San Mateo County. It is a joint powers authority of the county and all the cities, so thank you, Mayor Lou, for saving, serving on our board. And this is a list of all the board members, one city councilperson from each city, as well as two city-county supervisors. Now, for folks who have solar on their roofs, we also offer a benefit. We pay one cent per kilowatt hour more for electricity you sell back to the grid. We also true up your credits every month, so you can follow those a little more closely. All the credits roll over, you never lose any of them, and if your credits are more than $100 in April, we'll, right, we'll cut you a check. And we want to make sure also that, I'll go back one slide, we want to make sure also that our net meeting customers don't lose out on any credits they may have coming from PG&E. So we actually enroll our net meeting customers just after their PG&E true-up date.
If I could just interrupt here, so can you explain what the difference is in the true-up period between PG&E and PCE? About, my understanding is PG&E does it only once a year, but-
That's correct.
-PCE is beneficial, because you get that check once a month potentially, if you're generating more energy.
Right. You actually learn what your credit is once a month.
Okay.
You get a check once a year.
I see.
Yeah. Usually the amounts and the credits, most people size their solar systems to be just about what they are, just about the amount of the energy that they're using. So if there's a credit at any given time, it's probably not going to be a very large amount. We just roll that, those credits over, and if there is a credit that's more than $100 in April, then we'll cut you a check. So PG&E also cuts a check once a year. We cut a check once a year. The thing is that we do differently, is we pay a little bit more for the electricity we sell back to, you sell back to the grid. And then also, we'll tell you what those credits are monthly on a true-up, which PG&E does not do, so you can actually track your solar output a little bit better. I also want to encourage everyone to still do energy efficiency. My husband and I, we live in Pacifica. We opted up to 100% renewable energy, but we still need to do the energy efficiency because that is the greenest way to go and also the best way to save money. So the county offers some great programs, and PG&E also offers some great programs. And I want to make sure that people know that all PCE customers are still eligible for all PG&E energy efficiency programs, rebates, and other programs, because you're still a PG&E customer as well. So to recap, Peninsula Clean Energy offers cleaner energy for cheaper rates, two products, ECO Plus, which is 50% renewable, or ECO 100, which is 100% renewable. Peninsula Clean Energy buys electricity. You still get one PG&E bill, so you don't have to worry about multiple bills. Most San Mateo County customers will be enrolled in April for Earth Day, unless you're a metering customer, and you may be enrolled a little bit later after your true-up date. And if you take no action, you will be enrolled in ECO Plus to enjoy the 50% renewable energy and a little bit of savings.
Thank you.
Here is my contact information. I'm happy to take any questions.
I was smiling when you were going through your flyer there. I was at a different function last night, and a Brisbane citizen happened to ask me, says, hey, can I ask you something? I go, yeah. He goes, you know anything about this? And I go, oh, yeah, Peninsula Clean Energy. I go, you're going to automatically be enrolled. I explained it to him, what it was, and, you know, kind of how it worked and everything like that. And then he goes, oh, so this is legit then, huh? And I go, yeah. So I thought maybe you might have been getting scammed.
Right.
So it was kind of, kind of interesting that, you know, a lot of people don't know. So it's good that you actually showed up to kind of give an explanation tonight to viewers that are watching that may think the same thing, that is this real?
Yeah.
You know, is this for real? Because, you know, there are a lot of things out there where people, you know, are making false claims and stuff, so, you know. But my business is already on it, but the question I had is, I actually haven't bought electricity or gas from PG&E for years.
Hmm.
So will that actually switch over to Peninsula Clean Energy? I'd rather that it does, but-
Who are you buying it from?
Huh?
Who, if you're not buying it from PG&E, who are you buying it from?
Another company.
Direct access. Are you still getting a PG&E bill?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
I think, I think PG&E's sticking it to me, you know, on a transfer delivery charges because, you know, I, and they're blaming, of course, the PUC allowing it, but man, they're like way up there. I don't know if it's legal or not, you know, it's like-
The CPUC did approve a 20% rate increase for PG&E last year between the transmission and gas, so people are feeling that this way, too.
Yeah, we'll probably find them in court again, a class action lawsuit, to be honest. If there's any rep from PG&E here, you know, I hope you're listening, because I think your fees are exorbitant on the, on the delivery charges. They're way out of line.
Well, I think that'd be something to take up with the CPUC.
Yeah.
Yeah. I do want to-
But if you could, if you could, you know, kind of get back about, you know, you are purchasing it through another company and still being delivered by PG&E, of course, are you automatically enrolled in Peninsula Clean Energy?
Sure. I'd be happy to take your information and have one of our customer care folks get back to that.
Or you can send it to Laurie, show forward it to the city on the board.
Good, yeah. I'm really glad you brought up, you know, the fact that we're going to the cities to help get the word out, and I've been working with a lot of city communications teams to try to get the word out through official channels, so people realize it's not a scam, this is an official program for the benefit of the residents. And I do want to thank the city staff also for some of the communications that they've done here. They've told me that they put articles in the March Star Newsletter at the bottom of this month's water bill, on the city website, with a notice of this informational session, on the city's social media pages. It'll be coming up on the city signboards, and Laurie, did you mention-
And I wrote an article, my mayor's corner article in the Luminary, I wrote about Peninsula Clean Energy.
Thank you so much. So I think Brisbane is really doing quite well in terms of your outreach and your communication to your residents and your businesses, and thank you for that.
Sure. And I also, just today, I put you in touch by email with Mitch Bull, who's in the back of the room. He's the head of our Chamber of Commerce, so-
Great.
-he can help introduce you to the businesses in town to help encourage them to opt up to ECO 100 and just explain more about the program.
Thank you so much.
And I personally went on to the website and opted up, and I encourage each of you to do the same. It's very easy, you just have to get your account number from your bill from PG&E and just enter that information, and then you feel like you're, you know, you're purchasing 100% renewable energy, so.
Well, thank you so much for making a difference. It does make a difference.
Any questions?
You know, I do have one quick question, and thank you for the presentation, you know, that was great. You know, sometimes when there's change, it makes people feel uncomfortable, even if it's in their best interest.
Right.
So how many people have opted out?
Right.
And I want to, I like PG&E for whatever reason.
Right.
I'm sticking with it, because I'm not so sure about those greenies that are, you know, if I can trust them. Yeah, what's been the percentage of people?
It's actually very low. So we have opt-out numbers from our phase-one enrollment, which again was 20% of residences and all small businesses, and municipal counts, I should say, also. And the opt-out rate is 1.77% around the county, so it's less than 2%.
Nice.
It's very low.
Good job.
And the primary reason that people do opt out, and again, this is less than 2%, is that they were concerned that they were automatically enrolled, which to me means maybe they didn't have complete information about the benefits of the program. So we're doing a lot to try to get the word out. We're running a major ad campaign, obviously working with all the city communications infrastructure, we're doing work with the press, doing work through nonprofits, and just anything we can think of, outreach to get the word out about this, to help people understand what the benefits are.
Yeah.
And I know that also, you know, some care customers, low-income folks who are enjoying those discounts, are concerned that those discounts may go away, so it's very important for us to get the message out that this doesn't affect their discounts. In fact, they'll enjoy the 5% savings on top of their discounts.
All right. Good job.
Thank you.
Terry?
No real questions. I think that the program is very good, and even for the 2% who opt, or less than 2% that opt out, it helps to keep PG&E honest and trying to work to keep their, their costs down and do more to deliver renewables, and so it's, can be a win-win situation for everyone. Appreciate the work.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your support here.
Madison? Did you have anything to add or questions? Great. Well, thank you so much, Kirsten, for coming and for, and for joining PCE. I know you, you were one of the citizen advocates, and then you-
I was.
-were able to move on to the staff position, and we're lucky to have you as the communications manager. So thank you for all that you do, and-
Thank you so much.
-I'm looking forward to bringing it to all of our customers by April.
Great. Great. Again, thank you again for opting up to ECO 100 here at the city.
Thank you. Great. Okay, so moving on to item C, Skyline College Promise Presentation from Dr. Regina Standback Stroud, President of Skyline College. Welcome.
Thank you. Let me just, just, you're taking on, you're just, okay.
Welcome, Regina.
Hello. Well, Mayor Lou, members of the council and members of the diocese here, and friends and loved ones in the audience, the first thing I'd like to do is thank you for the invitation to be able to address you tonight and say a little bit about Skyline College's Promise Program that we have launched. I have, first of all, to say that I have some trustee helpers with me, the people that you see passing out the documents to your deists and to the audience are the Vice President of Student Services, Dr. Angelica Garcia, and the interim Vice President of Instruction, Erin McBean. And you are looking at the leadership team that was instrumental in launching the Skyline Promise, the Skyline College Promise. The Skyline College Promise is an endeavor by Skyline College to recognize that many students may want to have access to higher education, but may not have the resources to go to school. And at one point in the California Community Colleges, there was this real commitment to make sure that education was not preserved for the elite, but that indeed anybody who had the ability to benefit from education would be able to have access to an affordable form of higher education. But the cost of higher education has gone up, the cost of books and the things that it takes to be successful in higher education has gone up, and people are really struggling to make ends meet and to be able to access their education. As well, we looked at, at Skyline College. We serve this community, and we recognize that each year, we get about 2,500 new students. There are probably about 9,000 students headcount each semester that come in, so about a little under seventeen, a little over 17,000 students a year. And they go full and part-time. But the, of the 2,500 new, never-been-to-Skyline-Collage students that will come in in the fall, about 40% of them will leave in the spring and not come back. And so we started looking at, what is it about our practices, processes, and procedures that impact a student's ability to get in, get through, and get out of the institution and meet their educational goals, but get out on time? And one of the things that we did see was that students needed support in terms of being able to afford higher education. So we said, let's take a look at ourselves, and we needed to make sure we had our act together, so that meant making sure that there were clear, coherent pathways of study for students to be able to get through. But we also said that students have to be able to make certain commitments. So we would provide a scholarship that waived the fees, health fee, student body fee, tuition, those types of things. We would provide support with technology, particularly if the student comes to the Summer Scholars Institute, which is kind of a bridge introduction to college, it increases your It increases your chances of being successful and increases your chances of being placed in college-level instruction instead of basic skills. Uh, we would provide support in terms of transportation because you saw that we have a, uh, you may know that we have a shuttle that comes from the, uh, goes from the Daily City Bart to Skyline College and is free for students to be able to use and the community, uh, can use it. Uh, and we even help with, uh, food for some students who have food insecurity. There is a food pantry on campus where students have access to, um, a very, um, uh, what we call dignified and private opportunity to get foods if they need to get food. Um, and, um, also access financial literacy services in the Spark Points Center while they're doing that. That we would provide all of that. If the student would commit to come to college, come full-time, use the services that we recommend, to declare a major, uh, by the, uh, second semester, uh, and we would guarantee that they would be able to get in, get through and get out on time. So what you have in front of you is the card that tells about the promise. We want the residents to know about it. At Skyline College, there are about, uh, little under 300 students that have Brisbane as the zip code. Uh, that means about 7% of your population are at Skyline College, which we consider to be significant. Uh, and, uh, what we want, uh, students to know is that they have an opportunity to access this promise scholarship. Um, it's on the website that they can go to, they can go to the website and goes, it, um, it, uh, helps them navigate through to apply for the scholarship. We also have a Summer Scholars Institute that if they go to the Summer Scholars Institute, they are guaranteed a scholarship. They will definitely get a scholarship. And we get the resources to have these scholarships. We raise money, um, for an example, I hope you mark your calendars, on March the 16th, we have the President's Breakfast, uh, it's at the South San Francisco Convention Center. And it's where I have 400 of my closest friends come and have breakfast with me, free. Uh, but we encourage you to bring your checkbooks. We, we encourage our friends to bring our checkbook. And what they do is they support the scholarships. They support many of the innovation programs. So you have a bookmark in front of you that actually features one of our scholar, our promise scholars, uh, as a result of the resources we were able to rave, to raise. And we recently received a grant from the State Chancellor's Office where we'll be able to provide many more scholarships. So this past year, we provided about 138 scholarships. Uh, we anticipate that we'll go up to about 300 scholarships, but the reality is that we have raised the resources to be able to significantly increase the number of people that are able to access these scholarships. So, um, I'll stop there and answer any questions that you have about the scholarship program, the scholarship initiative, or anything that we might be able to do to spread this information.
Thank you, sounds like a wonderful program. Any questions, Madison?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. Thank you so much for, for coming tonight. I myself am, am an alumni of Skyline College, um, and I attended at a time during the recession when it was very difficult financially for my family and on the outside, maybe nobody, nobody knew, but a program like this would have really helped me then. And so it's, it's so great because schools need to be a place in which you feel really welcomed. And I know that, you know, in elementary schools and high schools, there are a lot of these programs available, but oftentimes when you want to pursue higher education, you, you don't see these every day. And those children, as they grow older, a lot of times they're in the same position. And so it's so important because, you know, a child can't learn properly if they don't feel safe, if they don't feel like somebody understands them, if they don't feel like they can have enough nutrition to focus. So, um, I'm just, almost brings me to tears because I, I'm so proud to have gone to Skyline College. I feel like I was really, really well-prepared for, um, the four-year school that I ended up attending afterwards. And actually, some of my most challenging, challenging courses were at Skyline. And I think that really speaks to the, the level of education that you are providing and, um, you know, I had always thought when I was in high school that I was going to go straight to a four-year college and because of the time, you know, in our country, I couldn't. And I had this, you know, uh, I had this judgment of what it was like to go to community college and I just felt like that would never, that would never be me, would never go to a community college. And, um, I really just didn't know what I was talking about. And I think that it was so good for my life to go to a school where I was learning with people of all different backgrounds, all different ages. I had never experienced, you know, going to class with somebody who was 20 or 30 years older than me and everyone was so accepted. And the teachers went out of their way to know you as an individual, um, not just, you know, hand you a grade at the end of the semester. So, um, I don't want to digress too much, but just from, so you can hear, and I'm sure you hear this all the time, but, um, as somebody who has gone through Skyline, you know, I'm so thankful for the education I received and I know that this program is really going to help a lot of people. So you should be so, so proud.
Councilmember Davis, thank you for saying such kind words. Now, don't be surprised if I contact you and want to feature that story on my website.
Anytime, anytime.
Thank you.
It's on video, Dr. Stroud, just let you know, so we can, uh, we can send you the link and...
I, I totally want to capture that. That is, the, the, very kind for you to say that. Thank you so much and it's precisely the role that we want the college to have in the community.
Yeah, great.
It's kind of funny, coming full circle, I, I took my first college class at Skyline while I was still in high school.
Get all these...
And...
Awesome, a concurrent enrollment student.
My brother, uh, actually I had an older brother who was, um, had a basketball scholarship to school in Southern California and he gave his scholarship, um, to come and play basketball at Skyline his, his, uh, sophomore year. So, uh, it was kind of interesting because I was a senior in high school and then I had enough credit to graduate and then he goes, hey, I talked to the coach, man, do you want to come, come play? He goes, if you want to, uh, go ahead and take a graduation, man, he goes, we can get you on the team now. But I didn't. And then went in the military and then when I got out, the major program they had was, that I took is at CSM at the time. So I went to CSM, but you know, I always look at the curriculum on, on the schools, even to this day, and find that my former major that was at CSM is now at Skyline and not at CSM anymore. So it's pretty funny, you know, how it's flip flops around. And some of the, some of the instructors that I had back in the seventies are there at Skyline now, so and...
Well, uh, Councilmember Conway, uh, thank you for telling us that success story. That's a concurrent enrollment student success story.
Yeah.
Might feature that also. This is actually really awesome. This, this is neat that we were able to, um, at least, uh, play that part in terms of your educational goals.
You know, I have to say, um, I, I think, you know, I, I'm in my 20th year on the council and I don't ever recall President Skyline College ever coming to a council meeting. So it's really nice to see you here.
Thank you. I'm glad to be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Well, thank you, Dr. Stroud, for, for coming to Brisbane and I, I just want to say, you know, Madison, I, I loved that story and I'm really moved.
Aww.
Yeah, I mean, because that's, that is the essence of what Skyline is about to this community. Uh, you know, so I'm not even going to say anything about it. I mean, I, you know, because you, you packaged it all just so beautifully.
She did.
Um, so a, as, as, uh, the president has said, the 16th is the president's breakfast. And so I have a table, you know, I've invited some folks, you know, I, I would love it if, if you could attend.
Yeah.
It, it's a wonderful event. I've reached out to Mitch Bull, just let you know, Dr. Stroud. I'm doing my job because I'm on, I'm on the Skyline President's Council. And one of the things I got to do is I got to, I got to help raise some money. And so, um, I mean, one of the things that...
You're good at that, Cliff.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that, that the mayor and I do is we're on the Economic Development Subcommittee. And, and so one of the things that I would like to do, you know, moving forward through this year is to work with our businesses and connect with Skyline College. Uh, to me, that's smart economic development and, um...
Absolutely.
You know, it's, that's the way to go. We, we all need to work together and, and you guys are an amazing, amazing resource to provide those 21st century employees. And I've also, uh, talked to staff too, so hopefully we can get some staff to come. And, you know, my wife is on the school board, so she's already reached out to all the school board members and, um, hopefully we get, uh, you know, quite a few people to come to the breakfast on the...
That's exciting, yeah. Absolutely, I really appreciate that as well. I really do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Terry, did you have a chance to speak yet?
No, um, I don't think I can top Madison's story and...
Sorry guys, I should have gone last.
But I, I truly was amazed to hear that we had 300 students attending Skyline from Brisbane. And, uh, I would never have, have guessed that the, um, participation was so high and, and so important to the community. So I'm really glad that you came and reached out to us to, um, let us know about the program, the Skyline Promise.
Well, it's my pleasure and, um, I'd be glad to return and keep you posted. Um, actually of the, we have the, of the, a little under 300 students, um, that attended, one of the students, uh, applied for the scholarship and got the scholarship. Uh, so there's one Brisbane student that is a, uh, promise scholar. I hope to have many more.
Excellent.
Okay.
Great.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stroud.
Okay, moving on to item D, Presentation on Carpooling Incentives from Commute.org.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, today I wanted to actually provide some information about carpooling in general, um, including the incentives that are available. Excuse me. Um, I did want to mention also that regarding Skyline, they've been very supportive of me and my kids who have also taken classes, so I think it kind of comes full circle when it comes to that. Lauren Ford has presented at, um, my PTSA meetings as well and has done great outreach for the high schools as well. Before that. So, um, as you know, we are part of Commute.org, which is an organization dedicated to helping reduce traffic congestion through multiple alternative commuting options. Um, many people are familiar with Commute.org, um, through, um, in terms of the shuttle program that you see around town, which services the Crocker Park Business Area, as well as help residents get to and from BART and Caltrain. Um, however, today I'd like to talk about one of the other, um, alternatives to reducing traffic congestion, which is carpooling. So many people are familiar with the traditional carpooling where people who live and work close to each other make arrangements to drive together. Um, outside of neck networking within the workplace, there's a couple of tools that are available online that people can use to, to make a traditional carpool connection. My Commute.org, which Commute.org runs, is a, um, web-based platform to enable commuters to better search, plan and track their commuting options. Commuter, commuters can register and use a trip planning tool online. Once they enter their information about their location, their destination, they can pull up lots of information about available carpoolers. As you can see on the screen, it has some information. Um, people enter everything from their, um, where they're going, what time they usually do their commute. And people can, um, take a look at that information and start a carpool by connecting directly with those people. The nice thing about that is that you have the flexibility of checking around with people. You, you can talk to them about arrangements for payment, to how to share the cost. So it's very, um, traditional in that sense. Nice thing about this platform is that it also shows you other alternatives, whether there's a van pool available, transit, what it would take if you actually walked. Um, what's not seen on here, it also has information about biking and if you just drive yourself. One of the nice things about this platform that Commute.org provides is that employers can also use it. They can create their own network for their commuters and they can use this tool to support, track and reward commuters. Why we call it Becoming a Star. So one of the things that we, that Commute.org has done with this website and...
Detective, difficulty.
Try again? (noise) 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 Keep doing it. (noise) 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 The nice thing about the website is that you can create your own instead of living in a workplace by nameifying the project, whether it's called Carpool, whether it's called... (noise) Or even... (noise) Or give you a little background or whatever when you track that employer. Commute.org used this last year for their annual commuter challenge. (noise) 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 Another way to find out about connecting...
Can you hear, can you hear in the back? Can you hear? No? No? Sorry, Maria, I just...
Is your mic working at your desk?
Mic check. Mic check.
Oh, there you go.
Let's try this one.
Testing, okay. Um... (noise) Oh.
This is Jane. Jane recently signed up at 511.org for the free Ride Match service. Now, instead of driving alone to work each day, she enjoys the benefits of carpooling. She saves time with access to carpool lanes. She saves money with discounted tolls using Fast Track. And she's even helping the environment. You too could do all these things and earn rewards with 511's free Ride Match service. At 511, we make it easy. In just a few steps, we can connect you with other commuters in your area. The first step is to register with the 511.org Ride Match website. Once you're registered, you'll want to customize your profile with details of your commute. Simply plug in your preferences, such as your location, destination and work schedule. You will instantly be provided with a list of commuters in your area, which will include each person's contact information. The second step is to contact potential carpoolers. Hundreds of commuters are added daily. Call or email your new contact to start or join a carpool. You can discuss who should drive, how often, what your work schedules are, how you'll split driving costs and any other personal preferences you may have.
This is so easy. I can't believe I haven't done it before.
And by tracking your trips on the 511 Ride Match site, you'll earn rewards such as free gift cards. Many employers, counties and communities also offer incentives to carpoolers. Sign up for the free 511 Ride Match service today and get connected. You'll save time and money on your commute and even help the environment. Call 511 or visit 511.org. Wherever you're going, start here.
Some of the newest things that are coming up in carpooling, including, includes using a lot of app-based programs. Um, currently, there's a few cities in Samatail County that is partnering, partnering with Scoop to provide that service. Um, all you need to do is download the app on your smartphone and sign up. What you can do is similar to what the websites do, is that on the fly, you can find people that you can connect with to set, to set up a carpooling, um, schedule. It doesn't have to be a set schedule like traditional carpool, it could be on a day-by-day basis. Um, the only problem with Scoop right now is that they're still expanding. Right now, it's not currently available in Brisbane, but what... But what we'd like to encourage people in Brisbane to do is to download the app. Where it says "Get Started," go ahead and press that, and it'll ask you for your address. When that, when that comes up, it will tell you that it's not available in Brisbane yet, but to enter an email address so that they can connect with you in order to let you know when they do become available in Brisbane. The reason we want to do, have people do that is because Scoop is based on density, and without having a proven show of density within our area, we won't be able to open that service up. So, if we can get enough people to show that they're interested in using the app, we might be able to get them to open up the market here sooner rather than later. Currently, Foster City and San Mateo, actually, they just finished a program to subsidize commutes with Scoop, and South San Francisco will be starting a program to do that as well very soon, probably launching in April. There are other types of apps as well. Each of them seem to have their own niche or are located in certain areas within the Bay Area, and most people can take a look at these other apps to see what best fits Other options that are coming soon for carpooling services. The WAZ app is very popular for people. They use it all the time in terms of finding out traffic incidents. What they've done recently is done a pilot to get their WAZ users to sign up for WAZ rider. With this app, what will happen is that people who are looking to carpool can sign up on the WAZ rider app, and people who are using WAZ will actually get an alert while they're driving saying, "Hey, so-and-so needs a ride. Do you want to come by and pick them up?" So you'll start seeing that, just like you see traffic alerts coming up, which is another way to kind of get carpooling instituted. Now, some people think of carpooling by using Uber or Lyft, which really isn't seen as carpooling anymore because you're really hiring a driver. Initially, it was meant to be that carpooling similar to the casual apps like these, but it's really become a business. So, while it does resolve some problem in terms of getting people out of their cars, it seems to be just getting people moved into others. So, there's, there's an argument whether or not it's helping. And there's, there's still the casual carpooling, which is mostly used at toll places around bridges so that people can get use of the high occupancy vehicle lanes. Obviously, there's a lot of opportunities when you use carpooling, but there's also challenges that come with it. In terms of occup, occup, opportunities, the obvious ones is reducing road congestion and the number of SOVs, or single occupancy vehicles. You also like to see the reduction in pollution and smog, and it can obviously save you time if you're able to use HOV lanes. Some of the other byproducts, you can help reduce stress, reduce the need for parking. There's the financial savings and share costs, and, as I skipped over, there's the increase in social interaction.
(gunshot)
The challenges in--
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 (gunshot)
Some of the challenges that come up with carpooling, that is the reason why it's not as popular as it used to be, is that there is the lack of flexibility. There is concerns about security and trusting the people that you're riding with. There's a innate social discomfort with sharing. There's reliability, there's also the concern about reliability of finding the right match at the right time. The pool of people that are available are pretty limited nowadays. And also, there's that concern of lack of transportation for emergency situations. If you get stuck or if something happens to your partner in carpooling, what to do at that point. So that's just some information about carpooling. In terms of incentives, one of the things that commute.org does continue for people that are entering carpooling for the first time is that you sign up at the commute.org website to get a gift incentive for both people who are entering for the first time. We do encourage that.
(gunshot)
It's available to you.
(gunshot)
Cash incentive or gift, um, e, um, gift card incentive. So we do encourage people to check that out. I'd also like to announce, next week, we are having their annual employer and transportation advocates event. That event is just down the street over at the Genesis Tower in South San Francisco from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. While today is the last day to sign up for it, we do know that the event is almost at capacity, and it's very encouraging to see so many employers and transportation advocates in the area participating to help reduce congestion on the roads.
(gunshot)
So with that, if people would like more information about alternatives for commuting, commute.org, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Maria. Really exciting to hear about all that. I was at a CCAG meeting about a month ago, and I think there was a presentation by--
(gunshot)
It might have been by Shoup or, or one of them. And it was, it was just really exciting to hear about all the innovation, especially since we're, you know, right in the middle of the whole tech industry, to see how they're working on helping relieve the congestion problem. I had a question. So, you said some of these apps are working on some, you know, automated system, sort of like, like you said, Waze is working on where it shows you, you know, where you can pick up somebody to, who needs a ride. But the, the ones through commute.org and 511 sounded more like you need to pick up the phone and talk to someone and see if it's a good match. So with the, the first two, with, with commute.org and 511, are there ways to also use that on the fly and for it to be more automated through apps at this point?
Unfortunately, no. They are still very traditional in terms of trying to set up people who have regular set schedules to and from the same location on a regular basis.
Okay.
So, that's why we call it traditional in terms of, you know, you're, it's, it's very back to how carpool was originally started. So unfortunately, those are not set up at this time to be on the fly. I know the platform that commute.org just purchased, they just started using it within the past two years, and there's still a lot of options that are available to it. I don't know if it will grow in that way, but with these other programs coming on board, it's, it's really hard to say. The other thing too about it is that with, with WAZ coming on board, with their new rider, or, um, app, that may be a game changer with Scoop and the other programs because of the difference in cost, and, you know, WAZ has 50 million users on it. So, and they're trying, they did a pilot in San Francisco, and they did a pilot in Israel, which was very successful. So, once they start rolling that out, possibly worldwide, that might be something that really drives the use, where, who starts signing up for which apps, just because it's already so popular, and some of these other ones are just still trying to get their feet off the ground.
Okay. And, and commute.org is, I believe, San Mateo County-based. So, would that allow you, if you're going across county lines, to still use the platform?
Yes. If you're coming or going from San Mateo County, you could still use it. But the focus is on trying to reduce San Mateo County, whether you live or work here.
Got it. Great. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Maria. So one of the, the challenges that you brought up was security and, and just feeling comfortable. So, how do you, you screen the folks that you might be riding with, just so that you do feel comfortable getting into someone's car and hopefully getting to work?
That's a good question. Some of the apps, when you sign up, they do, I believe, they do require you to submit information about your driver record, but not all of them do. So again, since these are fairly new apps, I think those are some of the things that are of concern. They haven't gotten to that point where they have a full-fledged program set up for it. Unfortunately, I don't know a lot about the WAZ rider, like how much they do in terms of background checks, or if there's certain things that you need to do before you come onboard. Obviously, if it's something like Lyft or Uber, they already have that built into their system. But again, you're looking at a kind of contract hire situation as opposed to someone that you're just trying to connect directly with.
Yeah. Like you're picking up a hitchhiker.
Right. Kind of like the casual carpool when you're going back and forth. It's like, you don't know what car is pulling up just taking you across the bridge. It's, it's one of those things. There might be strength in numbers. If there's more of you carpooling at the same time, that might be one of the--
Well, I mean, I think carpooling is, is a great thing, and, and you're right, Madam Mayor, you know, the technology is, is incredible. And, and that's one of the, I think, the real strengths of commute.org right now, being a leader, is, is using technology to, to get people to embrace it, especially young people. So, yeah, no, it's amazing tool. But, we also need to get our businesses connected. And so, you know, Mitch, do you have, you know, as, as you listen to Maria's presentation, what are some of the things that you're thinking about in order to get our businesses in Brisbane to, to have a more robust engagement with carpooling?
Yeah, and along that line, while you're walking up, you know, I, I agree. I was going to mention that as well, that I think, you know, we need to match up the businesses with these platforms so that we can encourage them to offer those incentives to get their employees to carpool.
And we do that. I mean, we have, we have businesses, you know, most of them are aware of commute.org. I mean, we run a Sierra Point Shuttle.
Because of shuttles, yeah.
Airport shuttles. Commute.org has the shuttle in the park. We also have private employers like Lima and other ones that are running full bus shuttles because the commute.org shuttles are packed. And, which is a good thing, but we need more shuttles. Now, carpooling is a little different in that it's, you have to get masses of people here, you know, in set times. But, you know, some of these new things, we will promote through the area, we will promote with the businesses, and see if we can pick up more people.
That'd be great. Yeah. Thanks, Mitch.
Yeah, it's evolved a long way the last 24 years. Started out as MITSM, and then South County, they had ITSM. You know, these are acronyms for, then we combined it with Peninsula Congestion Relief Alliance, and, and it morphed into commute.org. And, what do we have, 15 member cities?
Seventeen.
Huh?
Seventeen.
Seventeen now.
So you're the founding father, right?
Huh?
Aren't you like founding member of that--
I was the first chairman of the board of the alliance back in 2000, 2001. But it started back in 93. So it's really, you know, back then, it was actually mandated by the state for businesses over 100 employees or, or something like that, that they absolutely had to sign up for a shuttle, then and kind of loosen the restrictions a little bit, just kind of train them at first, you know, with the slap of a hand, and then, then backed off. That was the state legislature that started that. But, no, I'm really happy to see the direction we're going. I've always envisioned, though, the inter-county transfer of people, because, you know, that's just so inefficient in the Bay Area. I mean, our, our idea of mass transportation is we got an electric train that runs like this, and then a choo-choo that goes like this, you know? And it never connects, you know? It goes out this way. And, and it's kind of frustrating, you know, just where we're at. I mean, you look at New York City on their transportation system is, is pretty robust compared to the Bay Area, and, and we're a lot newer out here. I mean, you know, just, our urban planning just wasn't what it should have been from that aspect, you know? And so, you know, hopefully someday, we'll kind of get to it, you know? And I think, I think as our roads are falling apart, you know, and they're not being repaired, our infrastructure system is just, you know, kind of in, in need of help, and maybe there's something that's going to happen, you know, from being able to transfer people from here to there. And it sounds like, you know, a good idea, because I think a lot of younger folks are more open to carpooling, you know? Because, I mean, people in my era, it's like, "Yeah, drive your car yourself." And it's like, you get up and you go, "Go." And that's it. And now I'm seeing, you know, some of the younger generation, you know, the millennials, Madison, that they actually use mass transportation and stuff, you know? And it was kind of weird because when I was working in Fremont, all the young engineers wanted to live in the Mission District in San Francisco and transfer, commute to Fremont, but they used public transportation when they did it. It was just getting them from that end of the BART station down to where they were supposed to work, you know, was the more problematic because that's where the, you know, as I guess we call it, the east-west corridor connection is kind of still very challenging. So making progress.
Madison, question?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
That was a very informative presentation. Thank you. I'm sorry you had to suffer with all those ridiculous noises, but hopefully we're in the clear.
Yeah, so I had one more question. So, you know, as a city, we also want to, you know, be a role model. So, you know, as we're doing with Peninsula Clean Energy or Echo 100, you know, I'd love to see our city think about offering an incentive program for our employees because I'm sure there's a lot of people who drive here, who could, you know, if they could take part and maybe their schedule doesn't meet the, doesn't work with the shuttle, but if they knew that they could, you know, catch a ride from the BART station and use a carpool instead. I think it'd be nice to be able to incentivize people to do that.
Right, and I think one of the things, we do have a number of employees that do use the shuttle and get the shuttle passes regularly, but one of the nice things is that we are also a very walkable city hall and a lot of our employees do live in town. So it's even better when we get them out of all types of transportation, just get them here in that mode.
Sure, sure. Great, well, thank you so much for that informative presentation and I hope that we'll continue to communicate it through other channels. Well, do you know if it'll be like in the Star or other publications?
We usually post a few articles every now and then.
Okay.
You can definitely take a look at that. When that brings a lot of information, we like to have commute.org kind of push information to us and share that.
Sure, okay. That would be wonderful, thank you. Okay.
Thanks Maria.
Okay, so item seven, consent calendar.
Motion to approve consent calendar?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we've approved items A through G. Moving on to old business, item A, Terranova and Oceana High School Bus Service Update. Staff report, please.
Sure. There's not really much to update from the last time that we talked other than the two-by-two met with the Jefferson Union High School District's two-by-two. I think that was a very good conversation that the two subcommittees of the school district and the city council had. The council members expressed the concerns that was talked about at the city council's meeting that the, we would like to be out of the school bus business. We would like to use our money that we're putting towards the school towards educational purposes, not towards a bus. The school district understood that. They said that they would at a future meeting, talk about transportation options from Brisbane to Terranova and to Oceana, that we would look to try and transition out of providing that bus as a city, either this year because we don't have an option for next year or next year if we can find an option. I will say that we're still looking for options for next year and we cannot find any provider for the, from Brisbane to Oceana and to Terranova. The school district said that they have a transportation person who works with their school sports teams to transport the school's sports teams, so that that person may be able to try and find a transportation provider for a year as a transition. We'll see if that works. They also said that they do not provide any transportation to any student other than those who are legally required by law as special needs students. So they do not have any buses themselves that they operate for their students. They also, the school district also talked about working closer with the Brisbane Elementary School District and with parents in Brisbane about the advantages of going to the daily city schools. I'm thinking that covers everything that happened at the two-by-two meeting. We are still having, we're still in discussions with our current school bus provider. They are continuing to work with us to deal with the students on the bus. Michael is in conversation with them over letting them understand what the requirements of their contract are and that they are required to provide school bus service as required by the contract. I'm sure Michael's enjoying that conversation back and forth because it seems to deteriorate periodically. We are now putting, we're paying for a school bus aid from this school bus provider to be on the bus along with our late school students. So we are paying for that as in addition to the rest of our contract to ensure that the children, the students are behaving on the bus properly to provide a safe environment for the school bus driver.
So you said that there's an aid that's provided by the school bus services or by the bus service provider? Is that somebody who's, you know, skilled at dealing with behavioral situations?
I think it's more of an adult who's just telling the kids to stop it and to be able to allow the driver to deal with driving the school bus and not having to deal with the students who are acting up and, you know, I think part of the problem is that some of the students are very loud and some of the students throw things. So having an adult presence on the bus to be able to focus on the students helps.
And is that only for the late bus?
Yes, at this point in time.
Okay, and so how long has that been in place and does it seem to be resolving the issue?
It's been in place for about a week and a half and we haven't received another notice yet from them.
Okay.
Just so you're clear, we're paying for that.
Right.
And it's, I think, $38 an hour.
Thirty-seven it says.
Thirty-seven.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question. So you mentioned that the school district doesn't provide for transportation unless it's required by law for the special needs students. Do you think that they're concerned about the possibility that we are trying to make this their responsibility? Because then it would set precedent, so now they need to provide a bus for their daily city students and maybe kids in the other side of Pacifica that can't get to Terranova or Oceana? Is that like part of the concern that they might, that they might get stuck having to provide transportation for all of their students that need it?
They didn't, they didn't express what their concern was, other than they just, they don't do this.
No longer required by law for them to transfer students.
And that's a good point because we said, well, you know, our students need to get to school and they said, well, we don't provide bus service to anybody. So it's sort of the, you know, we're not discriminating against anybody here argument. You're all getting equal treatment. We're not going to provide you with any special treatment, I guess. So it didn't really address the question, but it, but it did help, you know, for people from Brisbane who might not realize that the school district is not providing busing to any students, even in other cities.
So.
And we also talked about Westmore High School that the enrollment wasn't open to Brisbane students. And they did address that they want the students that live up in that district to be able to walk to school, which kind of makes sense, but they're going to see what they can do about allowing more kids from Brisbane to go to Westmore too. They did say that.
Right, so they said currently it's closed, I think, to people outside of certain zip code that live near the school, but their school board can make a decision to open it up to Brisbane students. You know, if we'd like to, if we'd like them to do that, we can make that request and they can consider that.
So from my perspective, it doesn't seem that, and I could be getting this wrong, it doesn't really seem like we have many more options. I mean, we've kind of gone through this song and dance a few times with different companies and found one and they very quickly now are no longer interested in continuing. So that, that looks like it would probably be challenging to find another provider. And then it doesn't seem like the school district is very cooperative. And so I think we really need to start having that hard conversation because we don't really have a lot of options left. And I think we really need to start letting parents know that, and I know that we, you know, these meetings are televised, but I think that, can you discuss like the type of outreach that we're doing to the children who are riding the bus, their families and really letting them know? Because I don't want it to be too late and they're finding out, you know, a month before or whatever. They need to have advanced notice so that if they're going to transfer and go to another school or, you know, we had somebody write a letter who doesn't have any schools, doesn't have any kids in the school district, but their kids grew up here and she had said, you know, if this had happened when my kids were growing up, we would have had to move to another city. So it's like, can be that serious for people? So what's the plan?
Well, they did, staff did address that, staff is going to, you know, we did talk about that. So Clay and Stuart are going to work with Dan Burns and his staff on getting the word out early.
Yeah.
That's kind of the plan, if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the issue that Madison's bringing up is a key issue and it's frankly why we brought this to you starting in January of this year, even though we are still trying to work on maybe having a bus for next year. But I think that it really, the sooner we can make a final decision on whether or not we're going to have a bus or not have a bus and let people know. And the whole idea of trying to do something for next year was letting people know now or say in the next month or two that, yeah, we'll do it for next year, but we won't be doing it the following year. And so that people have, in that case, over a year to plan for it. So we're doing our best to try to get the, you know, give people a reasonable planning period. Our hand may get forced if we can't find a provider. And that's kind of the, you know, position that we're thinking that we may ultimately be in. So I think we're going to bring this back probably to your next agenda also and just to give you an update and keep you informed. And, you know, I think probably, and I'm talking kind of without consulting with staff here, but if we can't find a provider by the April 27th meeting, I think we would then come to you and, you know, want to have kind of an official decision not to provide the service next year and get the word out officially to everyone at that time.
Because really it's, I mean, it's not like it's our choice.
Not in this case. I mean, we, you know, it's.
Trying everything.
Yeah, it's, and I think Clark and I've had this discussion. I mean, one of the just things that's kind of been a little bit of, you know, a challenge here is that bus companies, school bus companies aren't used to dealing with cities as the contractor. And, you know, it's just, we've had this kind of disconnect between having, you know, the city try to provide the service and the school, the kids are going to the school and it's, it's just not a really great situation. And, you know, I think we wrote it as far as we could, no pun intended, but we, we just, you know, don't seem to be able to get a provider and.
Out of our arena.
Yeah, it's just, it is kind of out of our wheelhouse, you know, in terms of a service and it's just, I think, finally kind of caught up with us this year, in the last couple of years.
So Clark brought this up a couple of meetings ago when we discussed this to talk to the sheriff or what was it, the jail? And they have a big bus. And he said, no, seriously, looking to see if they can, they can work something out with us. So I'm wondering, did you, did you investigate that option?
I don't think we have. I'd be more unwilling.
Sometimes you have to get creative.
I, you know, I.
Their buses are not really prepared for children, for students to ride. I mean, it's not the same kind of standard.
I've never been in one, so.
They got handcuffs.
Oh, no.
It's not what they do, right? I mean, it's that transporting children is not what the sheriff does. But, I mean, to circle around on all the possibilities, we certainly are more than willing to call them.
I just know that Clark had that idea and he was very serious about that idea. So I didn't know if you had investigated. I mean, it sounds like it's obviously, doesn't make a whole lot of sense and probably a long shot. They're probably like, what? But I think it's important for people to really understand that, you know, especially from all of the comments that we've received when this first came to us. People were very upset and I completely understand that. And I just want the community to really know that, you know, we are, our staff is trying the best that we can and our subcommittee is trying the best that they can and we're really trying to be creative. And ultimately, at some point, there's only so much you can do. So if there's another option out there, we want.
Ultimately, we want out of the bus service.
Right.
I mean, you know, that's, that's kind of the bottom line and it's coming to a point where if parents want to send their kids to Terranova, they're going to have to find the alternative if something doesn't transpire. And that was the whole idea of utilizing Jefferson, which has said that they don't provide it, but they do have the connections to be able to provide it. And right now we have the money for next year, could use that connection. And after that, it's like, okay, either kids either start looking, maybe daily city schools, if they want to use transportation, or they have to drive them themselves or figure out carpools or whatever.
Yeah, I was thinking actually, so we just had that presentation on carpooling.
Commute.org.
So I know there used to be something called Shuttle, which would actually take kids around to activities. S-H-T-D-L-E. And I think the company is no longer in business, but that's, maybe that's where we're heading, you know, to.
We've talked at least on a staff level of trying to facilitate a carpooling service, or not service, not us being in the carpooling business, but helping people get connected to do carpooling. So we'll explore that and see, you know, what role we can play to facilitate and try to, try to help people.
Right, so if it comes to that point where we have determined that there will be no bus service next year if we get there, there's still a pretty good chunk of money that's budgeted for that? So this is Stuart's question, does that just go back into the general fund? Or can we apply that to a teen-related project for, can we utilize that money to put it back towards our teens since we can't use it for the existing service that it's budgeted for?
You can't use it.
Well, we talked about that.
Well, I mean, the money is available for the city council to allocate in any fashion it would like. I think the, at the last council meeting and with the two-by-two, there was a discussion about if we're not providing it for the bus services, are there academic programs at the schools that would be beneficial to the students? I know we used to provide, you know, Clark has a history much better than I do, but we used to provide calculus class, an AP calculus class. We used to provide additional hours in the library for students who were after school. So that way, when they were waiting for the late bus, you know, they had, the library was available for them. So there were some things that we used to provide that I think this council has expressed their desire to provide again if we do not, if we're not providing money for the bus.
Okay, so we'll discuss that when we cross that bridge. I just want to make sure that we, that's also on our mind, that we don't let that get away from us too. Like when we realize, hey, there might not be a bus, we should immediately start talking about how we're going to use those funds.
And we did raise that topic with the superintendent, Dan Burns, at the subcommittee meeting. And, you know, we expressed that we are interested in funding more after-school academic programs or classes like AP calculus or whatever, you know? Getting back to what we used to use the money for. So, you know, hopefully they will then take that information and come up with some proposals for us.
Great.
That is moving forward.
Maria just texted me that there's a school pool incentive program from commute.org. So we'll explore that also.
Okay.
So are there any other communities, cities in our area that are providing bus service to the high schools currently?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, when I mentioned this to finance directors in the county, they are very surprised. So it's not, it's not very, if there are, they are not telling us.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So the two of you are on the two-by-two and Clark, you talked about Westmore. So could you elaborate a little bit more? You said that they were going to look at it, but I mean, is that, is that a viable, I mean, is that an option that they're willing to do? Because to me, that seems like a really good solution.
Well, they have to talk to the whole board about it and they're willing to talk with the board about opening it up to Brisbane kids. Because, but actually, Pacifica has a decline in enrollment. Kids are leaving the Pacifica schools because families are moving out.
Yeah.
But they're going to talk with the board and take a look at that option to.
You know, if, if it fits in your schedule, you know, I'd like for you to get together with the two-by-two again to really push them on Westmore.
Yeah, we asked, what is it, we're going to meet in April again?
Yeah, they're, I don't know if we were clear about this, but they are, they told us that they are going to bring to their board this issue of the Brisbane school bus and the issue about Westmore and other issues relative to this. So we were going to obviously let them have an opportunity to talk as a board, as you are talking tonight, and then get back together. I do want to say one thing about the Westmore is that my understanding of what they were saying is that although the school had been impacted, it's actually, its enrollment has dropped also. And so that might give them some potential capacity. And then they were talking about that they would dedicate that capacity to Brisbane students first before they allowed students.
You know, if they can make that type of commitment, I mean, I think that would get us out of the school bus business. And, you know, in the staff report, it talked about the issue of the route being dangerous and I personally agree with that. And so part of the reason why I do support it or have supported it in the past is that the only other option was Jefferson. And I know that, where you went to school, Clark, and I think Jefferson is a good school, but the perception from parents is not there.
It is the perception.
It is all about perception. However, you know.
It's your most updated school.
I know, I know. And then they just built that new science wing. But if, you know, if Westmore is an option, now you have two schools that you can use public transportation to get to and they're relatively close, you know, I mean, half the distance from the Pacifica schools, then we can get out of the bus business. And we really should and hopefully we can do that, you know, sometime this year and say, no, we're not going to do it. Here are these other two options, they're very good schools, you got public transportation and they're relatively close and we can, like you want to do, put that money back to where it originally was intended to be, which was for academics.
So the way that that would happen, then we talked about cooperating with the Brisbane school district so that they can talk to the, you know, graduating eighth graders at Littman to, you know, encourage them to explore Westmore and Jefferson as options. So I believe that was discussed perhaps at one of the two subcommittee meetings. I know we had one today.
Yeah, I think that the, you know, just because this is not an easy issue, but, you know, one of the limitations with Westmore is that it doesn't have a football program. So that was why some of the kids like to go to Terranova.
What's the deal, what's the deal with Westmore? Because I thought that in the past, that was a school that we had the option of going to and I know a lot of Brisbane kids that I grew up with and some in years after me that went to Westmore. So what's, when has this occurred that now it's not really an option?
Well, it's, as I, I think we were told is that it got impacted. In other words, it had more than enough students from the area codes right around the Westmore school. And what we were told was that state law requires them to take kids from those zip codes first.
I see.
So they basically got impacted, they were filled and that was why. It wasn't that Brisbane students weren't allowed, it just was nobody outside of those area codes were, which would include, you know, elsewhere in the district.
Because I imagine that students that are probably, you know, their junior or senior year maybe at Terranova in the next school year, I anticipate that maybe they'll have carpools or it's hard, you know, to change a high school that late when you've kind of, you're comfortable and you have your group of friends. And so I imagine that the amount of children that, or the amount of teens that might be looking at Westmore probably is not a huge number. Because I'm sure a portion of the kids who are taking the bus will be able to sort that out just, you know, with coordinating with other families. So I hope, and that's something to bring up maybe to them and say, hey, this is how many students we have currently riding the bus. We, I don't anticipate 100% of them will transfer and some of them might go to Jefferson, some of them might go to Westmore. So we could be looking at, you know, maybe 30 or so students when you look at how big a high school is.
Just keep in mind that most of our students that take the bus are freshmen and sophomores.
I see.
By the time they were juniors and seniors, they figure out.
They go and drive.
They drive or carpool amongst the kids or how are they?
Well, they can't carpool legally.
Well, I know, I realize what they can do legally, but I mean.
Yeah.
I see. Well, that might throw that theory out the window. Well, that might throw that theory out the window, but I was thinking it might not be every single kid that we have riding the bus right now. It might not be a huge, I mean, you could probably figure out how to make space for thirty or forty kids.
So I, I think if we could get the word out this year, I mean, if we could do it next year and we got the word out this year, then that means that everybody that's going into freshman year, the following year would have noticed well ahead of time that their options in terms of public transportation were Westmore and Jefferson and that there was no other choice. And that way, everybody's at least on notice in the timely, timely sort of fashion.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope, I hope you're productive for your April meeting with that, that Westmore can be a viable option for all our students.
I think we're going to meet again next month then, right?
We're going to try to, yeah, yeah.
We had talked about that, okay?
Okay.
Before we move on to item, item B under old business, is it possible to just take a quick five-minute break?
Sounds good. All right. Five-minute break.